Good evening and welcome to the regular school board meeting. Independent School District 833. Today is Thursday, November 5th. 1.0 roll call.
Melinda Dolez.
Here.
Louise Hines.
Here.
Sidney Patnaig.
Here.
Pat Driscoll is absent. Sharon Van Leeu.
Here.
Katie Schwartz is absent. Tracy Burnett.
Here. 2.0, please stand and join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3.0 is the approval of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Sharon and second by Louise. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. 4.0 are district highlights. They will be on our agenda on November 19th. 5.0 is public comment. That will also be on the agenda November 19th. 6.0 is the consent items. All consent items are considered routine and non-controversial by the school board and will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items, but prior to the meeting, board members did have the opportunity to review each of them and could have requested that when we move to an action item. Since we have not had that this evening, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
So moved by Louise and second by Melinda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 7.0 are workshop items. 7.1 is our racial equity vision and professional development activities and Assistant Superintendent Kelly Jansen will present.
All right, good evening. It's different in these workshop sessions when we're not sitting in that square. I am pleased that our practice is to have supervisors introduce presenters and I'm honored to introduce Wayne Felton, Director of Achievement and Integration, and James McGee, Coordinator of Professional Development. As you know, we are on a racial equity mission to provide each student with a welcoming and inclusive environment for learning and success. We know the ongoing injustices across our country have had a profound impact on our students, staff members, and families of South Washington County schools. And we are responsible for nurturing anti-racist learning environments where all children, staff members, and families are respected and valued for who they are. And Mr. Felton and Mr. McGee are key to our success in this endeavor. They truly are masterful at working together and in leading our work. If you have had a chance to participate in their sessions, you know they have that special chemistry that makes it work. And I have no doubt we will hear about them for years to come, but not until their work is done here. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Felton to start.
Members of the board, Superintendent Nielsen, thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak tonight about the work that we're doing. And it's super awesome to see the work that we get to do around racial equity and naming racial equity in this district. And I don't want to take, nor do I think James wants to take, all the credit. There was definitely work that was being done before I arrived here a few months ago. And so as a district, we've made a commitment to culture-responsing teaching over the years. And a part of that commitment was bringing in different people such as Dr. Sharaki Holly and the work of others to begin to talk about culture-responsive teaching and cultural profession schools here in the school district. And then Cora Thompson, the person who had my job previous to me, began to talk about how we could make more culturally proficient schools and began to work on this particular item. And so one of the ways that that was done was by creating a racial equity vision and racial equity promise and meeting with different stakeholder groups such as the Achievement and Integration Parent Advisory to get feedback on the information and create a draft. And since I've arrived, being able to take that draft, bring it to more stakeholders, principals, teachers, et cetera, to be able to clarify what exactly it is that we can do as a district. So what we have come up with is that in South Washington County schools, we are on a racial equity journey to provide each student with a welcoming and inclusive environment for learning and success. We will accomplish this by constantly examining our policies and practices in order to remove obstacles that contribute to systemic inequity. And we will develop our staff to become anti-racist educators focusing on attitudes, skills, and beliefs to support students and families. And so as we begin to look at the work that we're doing, we want to make sure that we're creating these environments, that every student feels welcomed and that we're including them in the work that's being done. But we can't just say that we're doing that. We want to make sure that we're training our staff to be able to do that work well. So in addition to this vision, we are making a promise to each one of our students and families, and that is this: that student achievement will not fall into predictable patterns identified by race, ethnicity, or culture; that each student will have access to personalized learning opportunities that represent their race, ethnicity, or culture for a sense of belonging; and that every student will be supported, encouraged, and academically challenged by the adults around them regardless of culture, race, or ethnicity. And once again, in order for us to be able to do this well, we need to make sure that we are equipping our teachers and our staff to be able to do this. And that is when the partnership between James and I really takes off.
Board members, Board Chair, Superintendent Nielsen. Still not good at that part of this. So hi, I'm James McGee, Coordinator of Professional Development. So to be sure, we have been learning and practicing and developing our staff in culture-responsive techniques for years. So what we're doing was nothing brand new, but I did not expect that we would get the call to say, hey, can we take this to the next level? Because what we're doing right now is something that I've not experienced as a participant or seen anybody else do something quite like this. So Not a Moment, It's the Movement. First of all, we are very much fans of Hamilton, and so we've got a theme and a motif because just as that show has kind of combined art and history, we're trying to make sure that our professional development is engaging for the staff that are participating in it because we want them to learn and we want them to engage with this. And so this conversation series that we are, I almost said created, but we are still creating it. It's kind of a week-by-week thing where we're taking feedback from our participants every week and modifying what the plan is moving forward. But it's a six-part series where we've talked about what is Black Lives Matter? We've separated between Black Lives Matter, the statement, the hashtag, the movement, and the political group. Because there is confusion about what that statement means, what those three words together means. And we want to be very clear. So we have common definitions, so we have common understanding. So then we can move forward with the work that we want to do, which is creating an equitable educational system for all of our students and our colleagues. So each week, we've got, man, anywhere from 20 to 45 staff members attend the five sessions that we do each week. One of them is specifically set aside for our system leaders. The other ones have been open to teachers, although we have paraprofessionals, transportation reps, office coordinators that have been part of these sessions with us as well. But we said, we're not going to kick anybody out. If you want to engage in this work, we want you here because it's not easy work and it involves a lot of introspection. And so if anybody's willing to do that, we've been more than happy to have them be part of it. So the six, we're calling them episodes because we just weren't sure what to call them. So we call them episodes. Why Black Lives Matter, this is where we really set the foundation for what that phrase means in our school district. And it was really helpful for people because we're not talking about the political group of Black Lives Matter. We're talking about the statement that turned into the hashtag, which turned into the movement. We're talking about human rights. And so that's what we set in Episode 1, just establishing the foundation. This is what we mean when we say Black Lives Matter. Don't All Lives Matter? We talked about the counterstatement to Black Lives Matter, All Lives Matter, and talked about how there are things that on their face are true statements, but the context surrounding what we're doing is often more important than the words that we're saying. And so it's not enough to just know the words. We have to know the context of both Black Lives Matter and All Lives Matter. 846 was one that was really tricky and emotional for us to write. I'll be very honest about that. Being Minnesota educators, we know that there has been a spark in a lot of people in Minnesota after the events with George Floyd, the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. And we wanted to face that head-on because what this is not about is demonization of one group. This is an introspection on all of us and the role that we play in making sure that this does not happen again. 1350, this is talking about the representation of Black Americans in prison versus 13% of the population and how that lays bare in our school, how that lays bare in our predictable outcomes, how it lays in our suspension rates. We see this inequity in just about every measurable in our school system and in our society. And we kind of dove deep into what is the historical context for this? Allies, activists, and anti-racists, there are levels to this. We don't expect that anybody who really cares about this is going to have the skillset and the mindset to be able to jump all the way to being an anti-racist. Like so many things in education, there's a continuum. And what we're trying really hard to do with this conversation series is explore the nuance. So people are not good or bad. People are not this or that. We are all on a journey, just like our equity vision says. And allies, activists, and anti-racists get at just that. Where are you on your journey? We're going to give people an opportunity to explore. How comfortable are you? Are you ready to be out protesting? Or are you working behind the scenes? Or are you doing it in your classroom? Are you doing it in the boardroom? This is, we all have a role in this and just knowing where you fit is really important. And finally, can't we all just get along? Seems particularly appropriate right now because there is a, it would be easy to find division. And so we've been focusing on the things that really unite us as educators seeking an equitable educational environment. So that is Not a Moment, It's the Movement. We are, I don't know, this is one of the coolest things I've been able to do in education. So thank you for that opportunity. And then the big thing that we got to do this week, we kicked off a professional development series that we're writing in-house on Culture Responsive Teaching in the Brain by Dr. Zaretta Hammond. I want to be very clear, we are not doing CRT in the brain. This is not the next new thing. One of the most affirming comments that I heard today was, it feels like our work with Dr. Sharaki Holly and her work with social-emotional learning and Avid, it feels like it came together in our training on CRT in the brain this week. And that is what we were shooting for because we're not looking to just buy a book, bring in a speaker, and then move to the next thing. We really want to connect this to things that teachers know and are already doing well and then help them advance their mindset and give them additional tools so they can, you know, take this into their classroom and maybe in their personal life. It's worked for me, I'll say that. So, teaching, culturally and linguistically responsive teaching strategies. This is based on Dr. Sharaki Holly's work. Avid, as you know, we are deep into our Avid work. I think just about every licensed teacher has been trained in some way in Avid. Social-emotional learning, standards-based instruction. We are starting to see all of these things come together to create, you know, assessments, assignments, grading practices that reflect all, the whole student, their social-emotional well-being, their culture, who they are, and their skillset. But a lot of that has to do with our adults and getting into adult learning and adult mindset. So we're diving into brain research. One of the coolest things about this book is it's made me sound like a neuroscientist because I'm learning about the different parts of the brain that are activated when people feel safe and when people feel threatened. And as adults and in children, if we're feeling threatened, it is hard for us to access the part of our brain that is creative, that is problem-solving, that is able to do critical thinking. And so we are dealing with the very base level of the hierarchy of needs for our students and for our adults and trying to access safety and validation in everybody. And outcomes that we want to see, we want to disrupt these predictable outcomes. And we can because we have an opportunity right now to shift the way we even look at our kids, to shift the expectations that we have for them. And we're seeing it happen in our teachers and in other groups in our district just by simply changing some of the mindsets and some of the stories that we've been telling ourselves about students and about people in our community and about our colleagues. So that is CRT in the brain briefly. We will, as we continue through the year, we had our kickoff on November 3rd. We've got a district-wide PD day on April 26th where we'll be kind of wrapping up the year with this book. We're not going away from it, but we will be then pushing out modules and trying to tailor it to schools and departments based on what they need to continue the work. We don't want to do a one-size-fits-all. We're not going to just drop, all right, here's chapter 5, everybody go do it. We're going to work with principals and department leads to make sure that they're getting something that is tailored to their school. Because like we said, we're on a continuum. This is a journey. And part of being a responsive teacher is actually listening to the feedback of the people, the users, the learners that we're trying to teach and collaborate with. So that's where we're at with that. Do you have any questions?
Well, I know I was able to attend yesterday morning?
What is time? I don't know.
The CRT in the brain was awesome. So thanks for letting us join. It was great conversations.
I have a question. You talked about doing personalized learning opportunities for kids in the classroom. Does that, that would apply to all classes then? They would try to do some culturally responsive personalized learning opportunities?
Say more about what you mean.
One of our portions of our promise is personalized learning opportunities for students based on their cultural experience. Yes.
So how, I can imagine, actually I've seen how it works for a class like social studies. Asian immigration to the US. But how would that, how does that permeate into subjects where we're not, like where it's not so obvious? Like you're thinking about, I don't know, biology or opera or something like that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, one of the cool things that can happen, so one of the initiatives I was able to lead in a previous district was around engineering and working with our American Indian education team there to bring forward some native engineering practices that were connected to some modern modes of engineering. And so being able to connect the fact that there are multiple modes culturally and how these different things have been developed. And so it is going to take a mindset shift on behalf, I don't know how to do that, but it's going to take a mindset shift on behalf of everyone to recognize that some of the ways that we've done things will change when we're trying to personalize the learning. It's not going to be as it was. But I think as we can begin to peek forward and say, there is such a rich history in the sciences and in mathematics culturally, what we start to see is representation and also the realization for our students that they are represented in the curriculum. And I think that's our ultimate goal, is that sense of belonging and connection.
Along with that, we're also trying to expand what our definition of culture is and making sure that it goes beyond race and ethnicity or home language. When I'm an adult and I'm working with students, we have cultural differences just because of our age. And so when we're talking about personalizing learning so kids are, or students are feeling culturally represented, sometimes that means you might have to get on TikTok and you might have to learn what kids are actually using to communicate with each other and not see that as a weakness, but capitalize on that as a strength that they have and modify what I'm doing to be responsive to what they need. So broadening out, so our definition of culture is not just race, ethnicity, language, it's family makeup. It's so many more pieces of the way that people are socialized.
The other thing I'd add to that is personalization can also be making examples relevant, making questions relevant so that a kid can relate to them. So it's, it could be a matter of just giving multiple different examples to demonstrate something that would be related to, you know, I think, you know, Dr. Jacobus always told the story about a hot dish, like what's a hot dish versus a casserole hot dish versus an actually hot dish. So just making sure when you're giving examples that you're making that learning relevant for them. And so that also can be part of that culture-responsive and personalization piece of it as well. So, but I think everything together collectively is just that personalization. I think we use that term a lot, but what does it actually mean to your point? 100%. This ties into that. And that's where getting those teachers in that human-centered design mindset, how can I design this learning activity around this standard that meets the needs of these kids that are in front of me today? And then it could be different the next time I do it. And it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work for teachers. And so the more that they're grounded in just the principles of, you know, the brain and things and the why, and it just becomes part of who they are, it's not a let me pull up my, let me pull out my binder and check out the Avid strategy I'm going to use today. And our teachers are becoming really masterful at just internalizing things and having those conversations. So it's all part of that.
Which by the way are free.
6,000.
He wants to plug. He wants you to plug it.
Yeah, generally speaking, so the people that have signed up, they've signed up for all six sessions. We just gave our teachers four different sessions that they could choose from based on what time works for them. Schedules are...
Yeah, 20 to 45 per session.
Oh yeah, so we're doing five sessions each week and each session has 20 to 45.
Better?
Yeah, and for the most part, people, we have the same people coming to the same session, which is really cool because we're trying to be intentional around our breakout rooms and how we have those conversations. But also to see how people are building on previous conversations is super helpful. And we're trying to be as consistent as possible about certain themes so that as we're building, we can say, like this week, we did an activity around just giving people the opportunity to speak how they're feeling. And we said, hey, remember, we started every one of these sessions talking about speaking your truth and what that looks like. And so I was able to bring that back. And so, yeah, it's been really consistent. It's been really cool to see people's growth through it.
There's also not a lot of opportunities for our staff to engage across grade levels. And we're talking, we've got pre-K 12-plus that we're working with in these sessions. And so they hear the experience that an elementary teacher is having versus what a high school teacher is experiencing. I mean, they're seeing diversity in just experience based on the age of their kids. And so that's making the conversation that much more rich because we're getting out of our bubble, we're getting out of our comfort zone really with being in a site or in a grade level and really expanding it to see what the experience is like for teachers and students across our district.
Wayne and James, you know, you're two people in a large system. Can you talk about when we deliver professional development, what that looks like and who's kind of leading it then at the sites if there's only two people in all of these schools?
Yes. Yeah, this year was a major exercise in trust for me because I'm a little bit of a control freak. So the professional development that was delivered on November 3rd, first of all, most of the work of preparing the slideshow and training all of our trainers was done by Gina Spoo and Sandy Sosado-Falgan, who both are in the ANI department. From there, they trained all of our principals, all of our student achievement specialists, all of our equity teacher leaders, and some other staff who are on leadership teams and sites. And so this professional development was delivered at sites by our principals and our leadership teams within schools. So I mean, when we talk about like the multiplier effect, we expanded the number of people who have the skillset to just engage in these conversations exponentially. So we don't, I mean, this will go on if we're not here because we have empowered hopefully a huge bunch of people that are able to carry on this work.
And recognizing that when we do it that way, we also get a diversity of how that voice comes across. James and I are very, very unique in the way that we approach things, in part because of our personalities and such. What was cool was to hear people coming back from Tuesday and talking about their experiences. And there were certain things that were consistent across the board, which is what we want. We also recognize that there has to be some nuance, like how that conversation happens at Woodbury Middle is going to be different than how it happens at East Ridge because of the context, the students, the experiences, et cetera. And we want that responsiveness. We want what we're delivering to be responsive to the spaces while also being consistent in our ethos.
I have a question on the Not a Moment, It's the Movement. I've been watching them and they're really great, but kind of a twofold question. First off, is this something that, we said there's about 100 people involved now, is this something that will be offered again coming up where more staff will be able to do it? And then also, how are you finding the receptiveness of people so far, you know, with openness and comfortability and all of that? How are you finding things so far?
So to what happens next, I don't know what happens next for staff. What I can tell you right now is this is posted and so while we have people attending the live sessions, we do have more people that are attending asynchronously and sending us their thoughts, their takeaways via email. We've had people request to have some sit-downs with us because they are struggling with some of the content. And, you know, that's such a cool place to be in where we get to be responsive to, I mean, this is what culture-responsive teaching is, is learning who our users are. We're also wanting to modify some of the content and take it to our not-teaching staff so that we're addressing culture-responsive techniques at every level of our district because teachers are not the only holder of the keys when it comes to student experience. When you get on the bus, when you're served a meal, when you're in the hallway, everybody in our district has an opportunity to impact the lives of our kids. And if we haven't armed everybody in our district with a toolset to have positive trust-building moments with our kids, then that's on us. And so we are going to be working with our department heads to see what parts of this can we modify to fit your department. Regarding overall feedback?
I mean, people love us, right? No, no, honestly?
And I thought you were going to be humble and I was going to be like, I'm sure they're going to be really humble, so I'll give you some of the feedback.
No, I think honestly, the feedback has been really, really great. What is the coolest for, I'll speak from the I, what has been the coolest for me is when people reach out and they say, okay, you said this thing and I really want you to explain it. Or we've gotten some emails where it's like, I think that everything that you just said was wrong, right? Like we've gotten a couple of those. And we, you know, hop into a WebEx and say, okay? And for us, it's, on the one hand, let's have that conversation. On the other hand, let's make some modifications in how we approach this. Because it's not that we're going to stop doing the work, but if we can't communicate it well, it doesn't matter. And so we have, and it's been very few, right? And so for the most part, it has been people overwhelmed at the fact that we get to have this conversation. And I'm overwhelmed at the fact that we get to have this conversation. And when we have gotten feedback that was, I don't want to say negative, but where people were asking questions, we've been able to engage people in conversations. And so there hasn't been a wholesale dismissal by anybody that we've experienced. Even, there was an email that we got from a person in this district who watched an episode of ours that I was for sure was going to be upset. And they talked about how professionally we handled the episode 846. And so it's moments like that where we're like, okay, maybe we're doing something right.
Now, the flip side of that is, we know that the number of teachers that are engaging with this is only a fraction of our teaching staff. And the people who are attending this, this is voluntary. It is, yes, we're getting CEU and that's it. And so what we're experiencing right now are what we probably call our earlier adopters. And so we know that this message is something that we want everybody to hear, whether they not, whether it's us delivering it or if it's coming from their colleagues. We know that there are more people that we want to engage with this work. But the more people, like the same with our November 3rd, the more people that we can empower to actually have these conversations and to have the common definitions and to have the trust that we've got a community of people that are behind you on this, hopefully we'll start to see this pick up more users and participants.
I'd like to add something just to that. I've taken a lot of professional development in this district and a lot of it's been great. But there aren't many times that I want to talk to my husband about it or that he wants to listen to anything that I learned about education. So it's probably not on your rubric, but you could add that one.
But I think that's a good point because I think what we see happening is that they feel like now it's a safe space to have the conversation, maybe not with their spouse, but with their other colleague who didn't attend. And so the num, I think it'd be interesting to do a survey or some way, Pepe doesn't like when we say that word, but I think, you know, to see, I think word of mouth is way bigger than we can ever anticipate because I do know that those conversations are happening between colleagues who did attend and then maybe encourage their colleague to, well, it's online, you can pick it up here. So I think this in particular series has caused a lot of conversation, which results in growth. So it's been great.
And I just want to say thank you as a former kid, right? I grew up in a time where teachers would, let me put, I guess it's too hard to say, I'm going to call you whatever. Or, you know, I would have teachers who would say things to me about my parents because my parents were super, my parents are immigrants and they're hard to under, well... they're not hard for me to understand, but apparently other people think so. You know, and so I think it's really important that for a lot of kids in our district, I mean, like I wish this had been the case 30 years ago when I was a kid. And so I'm really thankful that we're doing this now. I'm thankful that my own kids aren't going to have, oh, your name is weird or your parents talk funny or whatever. And so I'm really grateful for the work you're doing. I said, I didn't, the CRT stuff on Tuesday, Election Day, was really great and it was really wonderful to listen to. You know, one thing I was really struck with was how hard and careful our teachers and staff were about thinking about these issues and how right they wanted to do it. And so I'm really grateful that you're doing this work.
I guess I'll say something. My phone is cutting up, so anyway. I've been watching your, and events, programs, and I found them very interesting. But one thing that we have to remember that we don't change to make people feel comfortable. You have to address the hard conversations. And I, my, my problem with, I mean, I've been in this district for, for a long time. I have grad kids, great grandkids, kids, and the, the community is changing. And we, people are going to have to learn how to change with it. The world is not one race. We're one people, but we're not one race. And so I think that it's important to, and people are going to have to be held accountable for this, this stuff. I mean, it's, it's important work, but I don't think we should modify our intent in order to appease the majority group. I'm going to put it like that. I deal in this work and it's, it's hard work, but people begin to trust and, and feel comfortable. And the other thing is, is that I think Simi said it. You know, our kids of color have to feel like they're in an environment where they're safe, where they can learn. And with that comes success. And so I just hope you just, you're, you're strong enough and if you're brave enough to tackle this and to move forward.
So what we're striving to be is, as Dr. Zerda Hammond would describe it, is warm demanders. So we're not changing the content. And what we want to do is build the trust and build that capital because we are asking a lot. To me, to your point, some of those teachers are still in this district. And I mean, not if you went here, but I mean, some of those teachers are still in the business of teaching kids. And there's things that they are trying to unlearn because at the time, they were doing the best that they knew how to do it. They were doing the best with how they were trained. And so we can't undo all of that. What we can do is build trust with them and then demand more. But we can't do that with, you know, beating them over the head with the book. We have to come to them to build trust and say, these are the expectations and here's how we're going to help you get there. So yeah, we're very committed to that.
And I think our, we are trying as much as possible to be explicit about the nature of the system and the necessity of shifting the system in that individual actions are born out of said systems. And so one of the things we talk about all the time is not absolving people, right? So I think it was two weeks ago, we said racism isn't your fault, but it's your responsibility, right? Like, like it is incumbent upon all of us to recognize we are holders of these systems. And so really being explicit, and this is honestly awesome that we get to say this. Like I am, I am amazed sometimes that we get to have this conversation in 2020 in all the different contexts that exist, to be able to say to a group of people, actually, education was born out of racist systems. And there were things that were built along the way to make sure that there was prejudice and excluding of different groups. Now, we get the opportunity to fix that by examining our individual practices and making policy practice changes so that we can actually change the outcomes. So yes, we're on the same page. And I, I know this, at the end of the day, if we start getting weak, you're going to make sure we're strong.
You got it.
Just to add before we leave, and I, I think it's, if you haven't been reading between the lines, this wouldn't happen without Superintendent Nielsen's urging to do so. And in reality, the series was born out of, we have to do something different. And I, it was a 45 minute conversation with the two that those six episodes were created, like the titles.
Yeah.
And so it was, it is a courageous spot to be a woman superintendent and it's a courageous spot to lead equity work as a white woman. And so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Second. Is that, wait, we don't say that. We don't say a second.
And you prompted me to watch Hamilton and it was amazing.
Listen, every week we tell people, at some point, I'm just waiting on Disney Plus to send us our check for that.
Yeah, our entertainers.
Yeah, but it was very good. I will watch it again so I understand all your little new ones.
We are obsessed collectively, so.
You have to watch it with me.
But thank you so much. I mean, we appreciate you getting us going, right? First step, first step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight point, oh, information I have, eight point one trimester two enrollment update.
So I'm only here again for the introduction and I can guarantee John will not break out in Hamilton song for you. But he will probably build the dashboard and call checks for anything you throw at him today. He is here to present the number of students who requested enrollment changes for trimester two. So those students who were in the VLA model that want to go to the hybrid and those that were in the hybrid that want to move to the VLA. That deadline, as you know, is October 25th. And so John has been working with those numbers since then. As he goes through these, I just, just a note, and I'm, I, if he, I'm sure he'll point it out, but our, as you know, our middle school and high school will be changing models. And we thought, including the numbers was important tonight, just so you could see the number of parents who had requested. And it would become applicable if the model goes back to hybrid during trimester two. So, but starting trimester two for our middle schools and high schools, everyone is in distance learning and that means a model change for everybody, so.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Nielsen, Board Chair Burnett, board members. I'm John Lindner, Director of Program Evaluation, Research and Assessment. As Kelly said, we put out a survey through the staff, or I'm sorry, through the family newsletter on October 12th and it closed on the 25th. The numbers we're going to show you are true as of November 2nd. I just want to really put that out there because what ends up happening is, you know, maybe me and my wife both fill out the form and maybe I didn't quite fill out the form right, which has happened once or twice. And so then student information has to call parents and, and kind of fix things. And as, when you see our numbers, you're going to be like, oh gosh, that must take a lot of work. And it does. Tricia Torito goes through a lot of different iterations. So what we're going to show is true as of November 2nd, just because things are changing. 693 students signed up for some type of change. That could either be going to the district learning model or going to VLA Virtual Learning Academy. It was pretty evenly split with the exception, there are a couple more high school students that went. So let's just talk about how things changed in general first. We had a roughly 50-50 split between students leaving, wanting to go to the Virtual Learning Academy, do school from home, and students that wanted to come into the building for the hybrid model. Forty-nine percent to 51% roughly. If we look at elementary, because we're, this is what really kind of matters right now. Sixty-three family, students, sorry, 63 students opted to go to Virtual Learning Academy and 152 wanted to come back to the school. So we're talking 29% going to virtual learning, 71% coming back to the school. Middle school, kind of what you would expect, right? Right in the middle, 50-50. Half going one way, half going the other. And high schools, you know, just so they can be a little different from the middle, the elementaries, 62% of, so 204 students are going to virtual learning versus 124 that wanted to come back into the building. Obviously, these last two, middle school and high school, because of what Assistant Superintendent Jansen said, this would probably be more relevant come late December when hopefully we're switching back. Let's kind of talk about who these students are. It might be a little tough to see for you, but basically everybody moved at about the same rate. So Asian students, black or African American students, Hispanic Latino, two or more races and the white, pretty much all moved about the same numbers. There wasn't a big disparity. The, the next big question is, yeah, but how does that relate to our general enrollment? Well, in trimester one, our VLA, American Indian students were right about the same. They're about, well, less than 1%. Where we see a large difference, difference is in the Asian student group where there are many more Asian students, about 25% of our VLA students are Asian. And if you compare that to about 11%, we're talking K-12 here. We're not looking at pre-K or anything like that. So, so pretty big difference there. Our black, African American, 13% are VLA versus 9% general population. Hispanic Latino, nine to nine, so it's exactly the same. Two or more races, 8% to 7%, kind of give you a feel, so pretty close. And our white student group in trimester one with the VLA, 44% of our white students, I'm sorry, 44% of our VLA students were white and versus 65% the general population. So we're going to see a little bit of change with more white students moving into VLA versus what it was in the past, but it's not going to be a huge change. And again, with the secondary moving to distance learning, well, that'll change a little bit. And then if we talk about our other groups. Currently, for trimester one, roughly about 9% of our VLA students are EL. And if you look at these numbers up here, we're not seeing a big number, a big change in numbers, but they are choosing to move into VLA at a slightly higher rate. 9%, yeah. So special ed is 14 to 14%. But again, we're seeing a slightly higher move to VLA, so more, I'm sorry, not VLA, district learning model. So we're going to probably see a little bit of difference there. And then our free introduced, we're seeing free introduced families. 59% of them said, hey, I want to, I want to do the distance learning model. Currently, our VLA free introduced is right about 19% versus a 14% general number. So it's slightly, there's slightly more free introduced price lunch students in our VLA versus non-VLA. I am done with the numbers section and when I started, I promised I would not beat you guys to death with data. So I'm hoping to continue that. So are there any questions? Please feel free.
So I have a question. Do we know why these students are changing learning models? Do we, do we ask that when we ask the families?
Do we do? It is optional. A lot of the responses for the students that want to come to VLA, it's COVID numbers. We're seeing increases in COVID. It's in the news a lot. It's things like that. The other direction, it is a lot of families saying, gosh, my child really needs to socialize. They're, they're missing out on that aspect. People matter. So not to oversimplify it, but that's kind of like the two big camps. We're, we're worried about safety, but we need people.
Do we see any, like I know that COVID has been disproportionately, disproportionately affects black people or people of color in general in the United States. Do we see a difference in, you know, elementary, middle school, high, high school racially, how the families have been going? Because you're like, from the numbers you said, more elementary parents were choosing to go back to the district model.
Yep.
And more high school parents were choosing the VLA. Do we know, is there like a racial component that involves?
We did not, or I did not break that part down, in part because we're going distance learning for everybody. And these numbers are still changing a little bit. And I think they're going to change a little bit more all the way through December as these numbers change. So we haven't really beat those numbers down yet or nailed those numbers down.
Thank you. We will keep an eye. Yes. Nine point O are discussion items. We don't have any this evening. Ten point O are action items. Ten point one is the approval of our Finance and Budget Adjustment Process Guiding Change Document. Our Director of Finance and Operations, Dan Pyne.
Good evening, Chair Burnett, members of the school board, Superintendent Nielsen. On October 22nd, we presented to the school board our guiding change document to guide us in our budget reduction process. And made a few tweaks to it and we would like to get it approved tonight. So we can begin our work and we have, have our fence posts. I could go over it a little bit. You've seen it before. The why that we have to have the process is pretty much the numbers. I mean, this financial situation we're in, we have not had a high fund balance and we've been below 5% for the past five years. All the last, this coming year, it looks like we're finally at about 5%. We know that our budget was about a $6.7 million deficit. We know that transportation for special, special education, excuse me, and staffing has risen by $16 million over the last four years. We're anticipating, we know what the formula is for state aid, but we're anticipating with the state economic forecast that it will not be increased. We rely on the state funding for about 60% of our revenue. And our salaries about fiscal continue to increase at about 4% a year. All that put together, we are projecting our fund balances to be dropping down by the end of '22 to minus $10 million, which would be statutory operating debt. And we also know that this year's enrollment has not been as high as we anticipated it would be. And obviously with COVID-19, it's made a big difference. Is this a PowerPoint? I don't know what this is. The middle part of our guiding change document is the not how. And these are things that unacceptable means and these are things that we will, we cannot do in our process. And we will not propose a plan that creates inequities in learning opportunities between schools at the same grade level. We will not propose a plan that increases the achievement gap with historically marginalized students. And we will not propose a plan that is not at least $18 million in reductions or revenue enhancements over the next three years. And what are the results of this? The what? The what of our, our plan, our guiding change document? That will have some financial stability as we combine revenue enhancements and expense reductions that will stay out of statutory operating debt, which is defined as negative 2.5% of your operating expenditures. It will have resources that will allow us for flexibility and innovation that will maintain the taxpayer trust with ongoing communication and frequent updates regarding all aspects of our finances. And we'll be able to recruit, develop and retain high quality employees and we'll have ongoing evaluations of cost efficiencies for all our buildings and programs. With that, that is the, the document that we've come up with and I, we're asking for your approval tonight. And I'm, obviously I'll be happy to answer any questions or receive any comments.
So Dan, the, the 18 million of revenue, increased revenue and reduced expenses, that gets us to the 5%.
Uh, the, yes, well, that'll get us to the five based on our current projections.
Okay.
That's the, the end game. But if we can get a little bit more in revenue enhancements or some program reductions, we can shoot to get to at least, or go at the, in the very end would be the 9%, the top end of it.
So our goal for the three years, sorry, I'm, I.
So the goal for the three years with 18 million, at this point with what we're projecting for revenues and expenditures. projecting for revenues and expenditures, will get us to the 5%.
Will get us to the 5%, okay.
I had just one comment. You know, certainly, it's a massive undertaking, and so, just to underscore the importance of that ongoing evaluation.
And I did have a follow-up conversation, John left for the evening, but I did have a conversation with John, and when we think about evaluations, what he shared is, depending on the program, that evaluation may look different, but with John in place now, we do have the ability to make sure that when we're starting programs, that we have an evaluation piece already included in. So, it's not three or four years down the line, and we all love the program, and then it's, you know, it comes to a budget reduction time, and now what? And so, we know that that is something that we definitely have to get better at and do better.
The one question I had was, in the not nows, where we say, don't propose a plan that increases the achievement gap of historically marginalized students. And after hearing Wayne and James speak, I wonder if it would be better to change that, that it supports our equity mission? I mean, it, that, that to me seems difficult, that we don't propose a plan that increases the achievement gap. I don't know if we can actually, I don't know. I guess I'm open to conversation about that, but.
And I would say, my, my concern with that is that then it sounds like we give ourselves permission to balance our budget on the backs of our most vulnerable students, and I don't think that's okay. You know, I mean, I understand, like, I understand the point about supporting the equity work, but I think this is very deliberate language that says that, like, what we have now is kind of the baseline, our baseline, and we shouldn't be, we shouldn't give ourselves permission to make our current situation worse. Right? I, I mean, I think supporting, I feel like supporting equity work and not increasing the achievement gap, they're, they're similar, but they're not identical, or they're, they go, they're complementary. I don't-
All right.
I'm just concerned if we're not explicit, then we won't do it.
Sure. All right. I don't, I guess I don't think we're doing that now. So, having it in there, it almost seems like, well, I mean, I understand the intent, so. I'm not going to go to the mat to take it out. I guess I just thought, there was a, you know, like I said, I don't, anyway, it, it's not worth arguing over. Or, yeah.
The only other thing I would want to add is just, and I told, I was telling Julie this earlier today, is that it would be really great if three years from now, we're not still worrying about our financial stability, and I think it would be really great if we are just, and again, it's very easy for me to say, and it's very difficult to achieve, but if we can do all of the hard work at once, instead of, you know, kind of nickel and diming this stuff out for a few years to, for, for whatever reason, I think it's just easiest to just rip the band-aid off. Though, again, I say that as someone who doesn't have to actually figure it out. And I know that $18 million is a really large number.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, you know, $18 million in one, one stop or one time, that's a lot of dollars and a lot of stress on the system in one year, and what does that look like over three? Yeah.
And, and another practical reason for having a longer timeframe is that the, some of the revenue enhancements can't occur immediately, I mean, based on you putting them into place and actually, you know, the way the funding system works, even if you were able to increase your operating levy, it would still take another fiscal year to actually get that money. So, we're just kind of being practical. And $18 million is the floor. We just, we can't go under that, so.
Any other thoughts on the change document? All right, so, we would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Sharon, second by Louise. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so 10.2, approval of resolution for fund balance transfer.
So, this is a, a technicality that we have to perform before the end of the year, and actually, before we have our audit finalized and approved. And back in, in March, on March 25th, actually, the Executive Order 2019 came out from the Governor, and in that order, it was part of the state school plan, as we worked on implementing, changing our learning models and such. And there were a lot of different things in there, daycare, things like that. But they also, they also allowed districts in these times of trouble to be able to transfer what are restricted funds into, or anything in the general fund, actually, but even the restrictive funds are actually why they had to have the law, into the other funds like community and nutrition services. This actually became law in one of the special sessions. So, now we're allowed to transfer operating funds that are restricted or reserved. To do this transfer, we need the School Board to pass a resolution and to submit a request for fund transfer to the Minnesota Department of Education. We are requesting, the South Washington County Schools requesting to transfer $400,000 from the general fund reserved for state-approved alternate programs to the community education reserve due, due to the COVID-related impacts, in particular, the increased costs and decreased fee-based revenue related to the shift to providing required emergency care in the spring of 2020. So, this is affecting our previous fiscal year. The resolution is attached, the form is there for you to see. The number we chose is based on the financial status of community education and the financial status of the general fund. The, the reserve we're using is one in which we have a, a fund balance of about $1.2 million, so we don't feel that transferring from this fund will hurt the programs that it's intended That's about it. I'm just asking you to pass this resolution, and, and obviously, if anyone has any questions, I can answer them.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melinda, second by Sharon. Any questions? All right, since this is a resolution, we need a roll call vote.
Can I get my other microphone for that? Melinda Dole?
Yes.
Louise Hines?
Yes.
Simi Petnick?
Yes.
Beth Driscoll's absent. Sharon Van Leer?
Yes.
Kay Schwartz is absent. And Tracy Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. 11.0, reports and comments. 11.1 is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. First, to start out, you heard this evening that we had staff who have participated in professional learning on Tuesday, and we know that some board members did as well. It was a great day for us to focus our work on culturally, or being culturally, culturally responsive as a school district. For the board and the community to know that each of our executive cabinet members also participated alongside one of our schools. And so, our 10-member cabinet, we were all out at a school, and we too did the reading, and we were doing the learning with our school staff. And it was really a great opportunity to learn, to share stories, and to have conversations. I see everyone's looking at the dashboard. It's a pretty cool dashboard, just hang on a second. The budget process. This evening, you heard, and we approved the guiding change document for the budget process, and for the board and the community, just to know that we're going to begin that work shortly. We will be, be providing the board with an update about the process as well as the timeline, but just kind of the end goal, so you know, as we think about staffing and beginning that process by February, that we would need to have those reductions to the board and approved by the end of January. And so, that's the timeline when we think about the budget process. Our learning model decision. Last Friday, communication went out regarding the change in our learning model for secondary students. We knew stepping into this fall that there were going to be many challenges, and I certainly want to acknowledge publicly to our community that we know that that option is not the best for every family. But we feel like it's a step that we had to take. First, to reiterate, from the school district's perspective and our staff, that we want students in school, and we know that's where kids learn best. As we look at the county case rates, and again, I want to reiterate that that is one point that we look at, and while it's, at times concerning, we have worked, been working together with MDE, MDH, our regional support team, I mean, we have a lot of support around us when we're making those decisions. What was shared is that we continue to show a massive trend upward, and I use the word massive because that is one of, or that is the word that one of our health experts used today. Previously, when we reported out, we shared that our schools have been doing a great job with mitigation, and that for the most part, the cases and the spread were contained to the community. This week, I can share that the community spread is affecting our schools, and we have seen a significant number of quarantine cases as well as additional positive cases. And so, I see your attention. This, I think what we learned over time is that we got to a point as a school district that we have now so much data. When we first started, there really wasn't a dashboard to put data on, it was just so small in numbers. And thanks to our communications department, this will be updated each Thursday and online, right on sewashcode.org backslash fall planning, backslash all year planning. Oh, Fall 2020, but at some point, we might have to change Fall 2020, Pepe and I were just talking. But this is the dashboard that families can see. And so, you'll see the case rate today that was sent out, and that is the one that a lot of parents and community members look at. It did include the numbers from the prison, and if you recall, from the last two previous weeks, they've taken that out. So, our Washington County fell at 39.03. You'll see the positive number of cases between students and staff, and I don't recall two weeks ago exactly what those numbers were, but there has been a significant increase in those positive cases. And with those 91 students, you can also see then that next column is the breakdown of the 91 and where those positive cases are landed. And then finally, currently quarantined. And when I look at those numbers, the number of students and the number of staff, I think to myself, that is one of our average to higher-average elementary schools. Right now, we have one entire school in the, in the district that's under quarantine and out. And actually, staff is maybe just a little bit more than that, but that would be a typical school size. So, that number of quarantine, students that are quarantined, is huge. Staff, I will say, our communications department works overtime with Tara Goble, our licensed school nurse. This is a weekend, this is a 10 o'clock, a 10:30 at night job, because if, if we realize there's a positive case and kids are coming into school the next day or riding the school bus, we need to intervene and make sure that communication goes out. So, we see communication going out and calls being made to families, or staff members reporting up till 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, and so, there are still people responding. This week, when I talk about that impact on school, we definitely saw it. Monday was a super busy day when it came to contact tracing and following up on situations and sending out communication to staff and families. And so, I think we could ward off the community spread, as we've said, for a while, but as it has increased so significantly, we certainly see that now coming into our schools. And so, please know, for the board and for our community, that this will be out there every, every week. I also want to make note, as we think about our learning model, that the Governor did issue a new executive order that was issued today and will go into effect tomorrow, and that's Executive Order 2094, and that further clarifies about eight different points, and we were just briefed this afternoon on some of that information, but there will be some slight changes and shifts in a couple of areas that parents may notice in terms of student learning, that we still have to read the executive order and make sure that we're interpreting correctly. And so, expect more to come as it relates to that new executive order. Are there any questions for me, as it relates to the dashboard? If people find this helpful? This is just that quick glance. You're not able to click on it and see charts. One thing I will say is John Lindner, with his, all of his ability to do dashboards, for Tracy and Melinda, who serve on our incident command team, John Lindner is creating a beautiful dashboard. Instead of all of the charts and the graphs, he's putting that all into something that's very easy to read and quick, and now, because we have so much data, we can watch the trends over time.
All right. Can you talk a little bit about the shift to distance and how we think that'll affect, or what we think it buys us in terms of elementary? And then the other question is, for the case rate numbers, so you said, with taking out the prison, we're at 39. When it gets over 50 is when, you know, theoretically, is when elementary would also have to move. How much flexibility is there when looking at those kinds of numbers?
I would say, if you take a look at 30 to 49, it says that secondary students are in distance learning. And so, you can see that for the last two weeks, and we, we will still have two more weeks before we actually go, so that's actually four weeks. And so, what we look at is about three to four data points before, you know, MDE, MDH, they say, you need to make a shift. And so, it's not like you land on a number and now you have to shift. I think the goal is that we try to maintain as much consistency for our students. One thing I did hear from a number of secondary families was just that they had some time to think and to prepare and to make that shift, and so, it doesn't happen now until, actually, the 16th, I think, which gives families a good amount of time to gear their kids up and to make that shift. And Simi, your first question?
Oh, what is it biased, or in terms of elementary? Or what are we, what are we targeting?
Yep. So, I think, you know, one thing that we know about elementary is, and, and, let me just spec up. As I have conversations with superintendents every single week, a consistent pattern is a staff shortage, and that is, that, that was true pre-COVID. We've always been short substitutes, not just teachers. I want to make sure that I make that clear. Pair professionals, recess and lunchroom staffs, you know, people that supervise. And so, the hope is that we get our secondary settled in distance learning, and some of those resources, you know, the substitute teachers that did go to secondary can now be freed up to help and support in our elementary schools in all positions. And so, we are already talking about what staff does that include, who can come and help, because then, again, our goal, when we started in June, was to keep our youngest learners in person for as long as we could. And, you know, people are asking, do you think it's going to be December? I don't know. You know, it depends what happens in the next weeks. What I can tell you is our incident command team now, for I think the next six weeks, we're going to be touching base on Fridays, just so that we can take a broad look at the data and what's changed in a week. But at the end of the day, really, the decision to change learning models is based on our ability to run our operation, to teach students, to supervise kids, to provide them with the services that they need when they're in person. And so, that really is the big factor. If our numbers go above 50, and it says elementary are supposed to be in distance learning, but we have it under control, because all the safety measures are in place in school, we can cover the sections and make sure kids are properly supervised, then we will continue to have students coming in person for as long as we can, until MDE or MDH says we need to shut down and take a break.
And Julie, is there any type of guideline with MDE where if you get to a specific number, that they're not going to let us use those other factors anymore to keep the elementary kids in school? I know we're in our 50s, I think, today, in anticipation, by next week, it could be up to 70s. So, I'm, I'm just saying, is there anything? Can we continue to try to keep them in the hybrid model, as long as we're keeping our numbers down within the schools of infection rate, or is there a certain maximum of the 10,000, you know, number that they're going to say, you can't do it anymore?
I would say that- I would say that from my experience working with them, they are willing to be flexible. They want to hear the story of the school district and what's happening in our schools, and they refer to it as a scalpel approach, really digging down deep into what's happening in the schools. I do think, however, that if it's just so outrageous in our community that we may, we may get told we have to shut things down. There was one day, we had 232 cases minus the prison, it brought us down to 290, or excuse me, 198. And we hope that that was just a one day, but that, of course, was of concern today when we were on the call with the epidemiologist. And so I wish I know what we know in talking with the health experts, is we're going into holiday season, and again, you know, we have conversations about make sure you're safe, make sure you wear a mask, but we also know that we can't control all of those things, but we do want to have kids in school as much as possible, but we have to balance that. And thank you to Pepe, the communications team, for putting this together, and he'll, Pepe will gather the data each Thursday and make sure that it's updated online.
Thank you. All right, 11.2, school board member report.
Well, we'll start with Louise.
I very much appreciate the opportunity to be part of professional development around faculty work, the conversation series, and the field of art and training as well. This is great, very fun. And the opportunity to watch East Ridge High School of the World Series, which was nice to be, and I'm looking forward to being with Berry High School's play, Almost Made, which is that we presented outdoors. So very grateful for the win, on top of that.
Okay, thanks. Sure. So I got to chat with all of my schools, and one of the things I wanted to highlight was Newport was a top 10 school in the metro for its, at a, at a website called School Sparrow, which is a ranking site that tries to decouple household income from school performance. And so I believe they, they were number six, though I didn't write it down in my notes, so I might be forgetting, but they were a top 10 school. And tomorrow, I'll be hanging out with, virtually, online with some Nueves teachers and staff to just kind of learn how everything is going down there. I also got to chat with the folks at the access program, and one of the things that they have mentioned several times now is that the virtual classes or the move to distance has actually been really great for them, since they are now, a lot of the issues that their students had around transportation or childcare are no longer factors, because they can take care of their kids and attend English language classes or whatever from home. And they're launching a new T3 program, which is a transitions program for people leaving jail, so I'm excited to learn more about that. And then again, like Louise, attending the culture responsive professional development, I've never sat through one of those before, it was really wonderful to experience, and also the East Ridge and Woodbury, I got to see the Woodbury Awards mainly because my kid goes there. And then, and so I got the link. And then I'm looking forward also to the Woodbury Play this weekend, and I believe the Park Play will be online as well, so I'll be watching that.
Thank you. Melinda?
Yeah, I got to attend the virtual award ceremony as well through East Ridge, so I always like to stay involved in that. And then, attend the IDI training, the virtual one with the board and with Julie, that we attended with Terrence Hairwood. And it was just really interesting to learn the difference in the boards and my own individual, kind of that perceived orientation versus the developmental orientation. That was very interesting to see. And then, I've been watching those Not a Moment, it's a movement video trainings done by Wayne and James, and they're remarkable. I love that it's a serious topic and, you know, and to really get into that, but yet you guys add humor to that. I love the Hamilton references to that. I've seen the musical twice, it's my favorite, so I love having that involved in there. I attended my first MSHSL meeting along with Kristen, and they talked about the financial issues and decision-making for high school sports connected to the different COVID issues that are going on with that. So I'm glad they're finding a way to keep some activities going right now, despite what's going on and with our learning. So that's it. Thank you. Sharon?
I want to thank Brian Booth for sending out that invitation to each East Ridge award ceremony. Mr. Smokovich did a wonderful job presenting the, the awards. I felt a little bad because the kids weren't there to get their awards, but it was done very nicely. And then I also did the IDI, my personal evaluation, so I'm happy with my summary. I moved into a positive position from where I was. So I, I enjoyed listening to the evaluation and look forward to what's next.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not going to repeat, I did like all that, too. The only thing different I did is I went to the Park game on Friday, which was cold, but it was fun. So I haven't been to a park football game for a while, so it was very fun. 12.0 are our future meeting dates. 12.1, Thursday, November 19th is a regular school board meeting, and then Thursday, December 10th is our regular school board meeting, and I think that's like the Super Bowl for Dan, too, right? So that to look forward to. And with that, we are adjourned.